All right, the time is, let's see, the time is now seven thirty. And I will call our regular Monday meeting in the Downers Grove Public Library and order trustees to order. And in connection with calling the meeting to order, I will relay an acknowledgement, which is as follows. We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded traditional and ancestral home lines of Native Peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous Peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native Peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with all of these?
Trusty Gordon, here. Trusty Pataki, here. Trusty Humphrey, here. Trusty Cusman, here. Trusty Stapleton, here. President Haverick.
Here, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number three. Welcome to our visitors. Welcome to the meeting. And we appreciate your interest in the library. Okay, we're now on to agenda item number four, the approval of last month's minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes? Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes.
I will need to approve last month's minutes. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes and has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with all of these?
Trusty Gordon, yes. Trusty Pataki, yes. Trusty Humphrey, yes. Trusty Stapleton, yes. Trusty Haverick.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved last month's minutes. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, do you want to list how we're doing?
Sure, we are doing great. We are eighty-three percent through the year. Our revenue stands at one hundred point nine-one percent collected. So we will definitely exceed our revenue targets for the year by more than expected. And the expense, our expenditures are sitting at seventy-three point four percent. As you know, very often when we reach this point in the year, staff does a flurry of year-end volumes. So that will come closer to the one-hundred percent level, but we don't anticipate going further. And things are just plugging right along. One thing that we did notice is in the, we believe that there may be some building projects that got charged to the capital line rather than going into the library capital replacement fund. So we're going to have to look into that. Ian and I were talking about that the other day. So we will look into that and let you know if we wind up reclassifying a couple of those expenses. Because we all have approved the lighting project coming out of the capital replacement fund. And I think some of those have been moved along.
Oh, we, so we approved it coming out of the capital replacement fund, but it shows up as coming out of the operating line?
Yeah, out of capital equipment, we think. So we're going to double check all of those and make sure that we're doing all the right things. So, is that all I have?
I just have one quick question. Green Bee LLC, just, do you think it has to do with electrical?
Yes. And as a matter of fact, that gives the project, um...
Well, this was the initial...
The lighting project, yes. And so that would be, I believe that's the closeout payment if it was what we're seeing there. And again, that is the electrical contractor we found through the common energy efficiency program to do all of the rest of the LED conversions, including the daylight harvesting, et cetera.
If that does come off the capital replacement fund?
Yes, yes. Ian just noticed that his, his capital line had gone over or was... Anyway, one of his lines had gone over and he was like...
My bath wasn't coming up.
They, this is, oh, so we have not, we haven't gotten the whole, we haven't run that report yet to double check all of those places.
All right, does anyone have any questions, any additional questions regarding the financial matters as presented?
I'll need to approve the financial matters.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with all of these?
Trusty Gordon, yes. Trusty Pataki, yes. Trusty Humphrey, yes. Trusty Cusman, yes. Trusty Stapleton, yes. President Haverick.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Is there any public comment on agenda items?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. And we're now on to agenda item number seven, public comment on any other library business? All right, Ian, any public comment?
Sure. All of his are agenda items.
All right, excellent. Okay, so we're now on to agenda item number eight, eight A, the 2022 board meeting schedule. Julie?
So our board meeting schedule is pretty much exactly as expected. We did move the November meeting from the second week to the third week because the third week is the sixteenth. So it's very early in the month. So we are going, so we did make that change. The December meeting is still on there for the second week. So if we, the December goes.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about the board meeting schedule for 2022?
I will need to approve the 2022 board meeting schedule. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the 2020, 2022 board meeting schedule as presented and has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with all of these?
Trusty Gordon, yes. Trusty Pataki, yes. Trusty Humphrey, yes. Trusty Cusman, yes. Trusty Stapleton, yes. President Haverick.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved 2022 board meeting schedule. Question on that topic, because it just affects when I all have to miss the February meeting. And if that creates an issue, I don't know what else is going to work. Thank you. All right, we're now on to agenda item eight B, 2022 library closings and holidays. Julie, do you want to remind us what holidays we plan to close?
Yes. For our holiday closings, we generally close for just those seven per year, including New Year's Day, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Thanksgiving. Easter, Easter. I knew there was one I was forgetting in there, and then Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. We do early closing, which is unpaid, on, at five o'clock on New Year's Eve. However, the way the calendar calls, it is a Saturday, so we normally close at five o'clock. So that would have been on this list. I did want to bring the New State Holiday to the board's attention, just to let you know that there is a New State Holiday. You could consider adding any. But at this point, we do not close for Martin Luther King, or Indigenous Peoples' Day, or Veterans' Day, or... So at this time, I don't think that you make sense for us to close for that.
If there are people I encourage government plans for those, all of them.
Absolutely. And we are looking forward to doing some activities and programs around.
So if someone's religious holiday is not one of these religious holidays, they would be having to take a personal day? And it's unpaid, you pay like, let's say, a prom down or eat or something that's not in, what is considered in American religious holiday? That is, I'm just asking, when is it supposed to be considered as?
In general, staff can switch their schedule route as well if they do not have or do not want to take personal or vacation time. And particularly in, like, our part-time folks in the circulation department, they are very open to switching shifts with one another.
Just because I was not here today.
And full-time staff also have a lot of latitude this far in terms of setting schedules with their supervisors.
The growth of the collections are in the, obviously, that's not a sure thing. I felt a little closer to it. Got about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars committed to it already.
So we're planning as though it happened. And as you can see, we do not have a set In-service Day at this time between the electrical panel project and the upcoming elevator project in 2022 as well. We are not going, we're going to do a In-Service Day, a Full-In-Service Day for all staff again. But at the time to determine, to determine.
I feel like the option that a lot of the library staff, like, they could have planned only for potentially some other orders or not. I mean, I just think that's a bit of a future, I know that's been a job because, yeah, you don't have to go to all that. But holidays are going to come up for, for your traditional school or whatever it is. So you've got that additional functionality to be able to, you know, put a lot of it to the, to the, to the, to all of the...
And we did have personal times in more staff as well. Twenty, was that twenty nineteen that we did? When did we do that? I don't remember. It was three pandas.
Okay, do we have any additional questions regarding 2022 library closings and holidays? We have a motion to approve 2022 library closings and holidays. All right, we have a motion to approve the library, 2022 library closings and holidays that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with all of these?
Trusty Gordon, yes. Trusty Pataki, yes. Trusty Humphrey, yes. Trusty Cusman, yes. President Haverick.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the 2022 library closings and holidays. We're now on to agenda item eight C, the Resolution 2021-1, Recognizing Milestone Anniversaries and Retirements. Julie, do you want to make any comments before we determine whether or not we pass the resolution?
I just want to note our two retirements this year. Diane Jakus, who retired after fifteen years of service earlier this year. And then our retiree, Karen Neal, we just had her party. She will be with us for a few more weeks yet. But Karen has been with this library for thirty-five years. She has done great things in her time here. She has been in charge of our homebound delivery service and amongst many other things. And one of her other legacies for us is she is actually the person that hired Caitlin in her first job at this library. So Karen is, has been a wonderful part of the staff for a very long time.
Do we, do we, as a board, I can't remember when I first started, was, um, retired, I mean, now, which is their second. Sign something, write something, like, talk more like, even if it's like a note that we just passed under our whole meeting, just says, okay, thank you for your service. Because I feel like maybe people feel like, oh, this is, besides just like a kind of resignation.
What we have been doing, pretty impossible four times, was we did the resolution for milestone anniversary. We did not include retirements pre-annened. So we made that change, started including the, um, the retirements there. And we also do a party. That is, depending on how many years of service a person has been here, we do maybe a little, we do a little more. And we do, the library pays for food and food and cake. So, and we do decorations, flowers. So that's, that is what the board, everyone, the board and staff do for, for our retirees. And generally, our PR department puts together a, a large, like, booklet card for all staff to sign. And those pass around the whole library and everybody signs. Depending on timing, do you reckon you can bring those to, I think, in the board?
She's not, because we could just stop it even and just...
Yeah, I, I just feel like, I mean, if someone's leaving after so many years of service at the library, that it would be, even if you just write, thank you. I think that would mean, that would mean a lot to me in my leaving. I would really think it would mean a lot because you don't get to meet all the staff. Because that, if it's a small gesture or things that people kind of, I mean, just sign it.
Or maybe just on behalf of the board together. Well, I have a party, which will make me happy.
Right, right. I thought, like, I want that party to be, oh, you know, okay. Yeah. We have library note cards. We could go and grab one right now and pass it around before you all sign for Karen.
Yeah, that might be better, just all separate together.
And we could just do, you know, have you, thank you for your service, Karen from the Board of Library Trustees. And then we could just pass it around and you'd sign it individually. Raise your hand.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five. Thirty-five, you're hired.
Dave, you want to get on the board?
It's longer than I seen. Has a party happened?
Yeah, it would like you.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Down the road, we might be saying a percentage of at least. Say thanks, not give a long speech, because that's the last thing you want to do.
Well, and some, some staff have chosen in the past to do something that's more of an open house, that you open to everyone, to the, in, in some cases, to the entire community. We've done before where we, like, announce and then people can drop in and we have it in this room. Karen did not choose that option.
Yeah, that was, what I was just thinking about is like, we have to think about whether, like, if they were having a party, whether... If someone bears that, you know, like...
Like, plus, it's like, right.
Exactly. I would just start at the same, not only valuable board meeting, give us some recognition here, and that's kind of what we're doing. We're taking an evening out of their lives and all that, I think.
They've already given us thirty-five years.
One more.
At least we made the sentiment of the board, of, uh, wow, thirty-five.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 20, 2021-1, Recognizing Milestone Anniversaries and Retirements? Assuming we do get a motion that's approved, I will read the resolution.
I am likely move to, uh, some.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-1, Recognizing Milestone Anniversaries and Retirements. Caitlin, can you proceed with all of these?
Trusty Gordon, yes. Trusty Pataki, yes. Trusty Humphrey, yes. Trusty Cusman, yes. President Haverick.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved Resolution number 2021-1, which reads as follows. "A resolution of appreciation for the service of staff members who have celebrated milestone service anniversaries and/or a retirement in 2021. Whereas fourteen members of the Downers Grove Public Library staff have celebrated milestone service anniversaries in 2021, totaling one hundred thirty, one hundred thirty years of service, as follows. Five years of service: Gail Blazek, Ed Romeo, J.R. Dinosco, Lauren Gonzalez, Emily Kian, Amanda Klein, Michelle Litwin, Julie Melovic, Teresa Demisich. And at the ten years of service level: Thea Milder, Tracy Skosing. Fifteen years of service: Kelly Poche, Paul Rages. And at the thirty-five years of service level: Karen Neal. And whereas two members of the Downers Grove Public Library staff have celebrated retirement in 2021, totaling fifty years of service, as follows. Diane Jakus, fifteen years of service. Karen Neal, thirty-five years of service. And whereas the committed services of these staff members has contributed significantly to the library's high level of performance and high reputation in the community. And whereas 2021 has provided many new opportunities for service, including response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the diversity, equity, and inclusion trajectory discovery project. Therefore, being resolved, the Board of Library Trustees recognizes a great appreciation, a dedication, and perseverance of these staff members. Thanks them for their outstanding work. Unanimously approved the seventeenth day of November, 2021, by the Board of Library Trustees of the Village of Downers Grove." We have a... Thank you very much, everyone. We're now on to agenda item...
No, we have, oh, I'm so unfocused today. No idea.
We put it, I, I want anyone to read it unless we both.
Unless it was actually, yeah, that'd be awkward.
Okay, we're now on to agenda item eight T, Electrical Relay Panel Project Proposal.
I'm coming back to this with my prom, prom pants on because we, we hit the number that we were looking for as opposed to last time I presented this to you. This is much more in line with what we thought was originally going to happen. I began working with Miles Henderson from Fitzgerald Electric, as you all know, after we got the results from last time. And in working with Ray Bar, we were able to find out about Obvious Partnership, which used to be U.S. Communities, which is very similar to the TIPS program. And it's joint purchasing. These are all contracts that have been governmental approved. So the way that it works is I produce the scope of work, tell them what we need to do, research all the parts along with the help of Miles Henderson, so we can make sure we got all the right stuff. And that, it is just one flat fee. This is, this is material, labor, overtime, the whole thing. So we did include overtime costs because there is going to be some off-hours work. We definitely don't want to have a shutdown when, when we're supposed to be open. So there's going to be some early, uh, early mornings or late nights for myself and the electricians. But, uh, yeah, so we're going to reuse all the existing field devices. We're going to reuse the, the tubs. But everything inside and all the circuitry is going to be new. It's going to be like a brand-new system. If we choose to later on down the road and we want to replace field devices, that's fine. But along with the Green Bee project that we just completed, we are compliant in daylight harvesting and in all of the occupancy sensors that we need for office areas and everything else. So that's why we did that as well. That just kind of cut some off of this.
What's daylight harvesting?
Daylight harvesting, so in our office area, circulation's one of the perfect places, for example. There's so many windows there. As more daylight comes through, the lights actually auto dim because they don't need to put out as much power because you're getting some of that natural light in. So, yes, it has smart technology that's way smarter than me. And it does it automatically. It's been working great. We have not had any issues whatsoever. So that, that happened to work out just perfectly like we wanted. And then hopefully with this, it's, it's done. We're, you know, it's like we have a brand-new electrical system.
Excellent. Nice shot, Ian.
Thank you.
Will this impact, like, the next time this type of project comes around, like, any more or less difficult for us to replace or repair?
I'm sorry, I didn't, that's the first part. I'm sorry.
Well, do we, we're taking this approach, which is great for our budget, of course.
Right.
Will it change the way we have to deal with any, any of these systems and fifteen, twenty years from now? Or does it much, yeah, if you did it the way that we did, this way, go on?
Yeah, this is, this is pretty open-ended, so parts are easily replaceable. If anything goes bad, it's pretty much, we get to use that. And this is all, this is all fact that it's going to be around for a long time. And by long, I mean that we still have a fact for you.
It's not like kicking the can down.
No, no, and that's what we didn't want to do. We didn't want to give you just a band-aid mix because that's only going to get us so far. So this, no, this is for the long haul. This is, uh, it's not as, as, you know, big as what we had originally planned. But again, we didn't anticipate that it would only wire through the entire building and everything for that. And this includes none of that because we're able to use these current field devices. They're not obsolete yet. Are, you know, they're aged, but they, they still function as they should and they still operate like they're supposed to. So again, this is, this is a system that we can add until later. If we choose to go ahead and change those, and that's the nice open-endedness of it. And we're not just stuck with proprietary, you know, equipment. We can, we can go out, we can use ground, we can use, you know, cobble, we can use whatever we want. So that's, that's really good for us and for the budget.
And I also, so I think that this will be kind of half, or some of it will be this year's budget and some of it. It doesn't really matter because we have a lot of ways.
Oh, actually, it will wind up straddling, straddling the budget year because we're going to have to, most of the work, the work will actually take place in 2023 because the lead time... Or twenty twenty-two.
The lead time's pretty far out.
There's, there is a, what is, what is the fifteen weeks?
So, so it's eight to twelve for this. Eight to twelve if they can't locally source all the material. Now, last I talked with Jeffrey and Ray Bar, they had a lot of this stuff ready to go. So it might be less than that. I'm thinking that we're, with the holidays and everything else, and by the time it goes through approval and they gather everything and, you know, Fitzgerald is ready to roll their crew out and get everything out here end of January, beginning of February, start date. But it shouldn't take that long because we're, we're just cutting over panels. You know, it's, it's, it's got the one, it's putting the new stuff in and landing all the wires and the new stuff. And then prover, we're going to have a technician from Watt Stopper that's going to come in and program everything for us. That's included in the price as well. Maybe a week and a half for, for its actual total crew time.
Do we have any additional questions for Ian, or questions regarding the Electrical Relay Panel Project Proposal?
I'll need to approve the Electrical Relay Panel proposal as we have been...
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Electrical Relay Panel Project Proposal. Has been... Has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed to roll out these?
Trusty Dunham?
Yes.
Trusty Dunham?
Yes.
Trusty Humphrey?
Yes.
Trusty Stiglitz?
Yes.
Trusty Stiglitz?
Yes.
Trusty Humphrey?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the Electrical Relay Panel Project Proposal. Thank you again for all your hard work.
A pleasure.
We're now on to agenda item 8E, The Table Purchase Proposal.
And this is one that Ian worked with me also on to make it sure that we're getting all the right things and all the right sizes and we know where they're all going and which ones can have power in the legs and which ones don't. So as you know, this is the through the TIPS joint purchasing program that you tested our last meeting. LFI is the vendor. They work closely with TIPS. And what they did is they originally gave us seven styles of cables from six different vendors that were included in the TIPS package. We selected the one that has the best finishes for us, the lifestyles we wanted, the power and data ports in them that we liked. So the pricing did come back more than we expected. So what we are proposing here is this focuses on the public-use tables. And we are not, the parts that will be put off until 2023 tend to be the like side tables and the tables that we're using like around our public service desks right now. Like the little table in front of the circulation desk right now is one of the ones that would not be replaced in this project. Rational there is most of those tables are still in good shape. They have not been, they have not seen the wear and tear that the general public tables have because they are in areas where they are not pushed and pulled and relocated all day long. They don't have teenagers lying on them and having sex in one of their study rooms. And so... So it is, it's $104,000. We can do this now. There's a 50% deposit that goes in and then it's 10 to 12 weeks lead time to get the tables. And then that would, the remainder is due after there is stuff. So that would put half of the project cost in 2021 and half in 2022. And our budget can support that.
Would this be, would this, this would not be in the capital base fund or...
No, this is not out of the capital replacement fund. This is out of the capital equipment over $20,000 fund, which is, Caitlin, help me, I never remember the line numbers.
I have it on.
Have they done it to our current...
I just can't believe we're at that. I'm sorry, you know, it's very impressive.
You are currently, the tables that are being replaced, do they have, do they have power or not have power?
No, they do not. And that's actually one of the considerations that is in the standards for Illinois Public Libraries is to provide power and data in tables as needed. And so what we've done is we went around and looked at where is there an opportunity to use those floor boxes, plug one in, so that that's readily available for people. Around, as you know, much of our seating, especially on the second floor, is around the perimeter of the library. And so there are outlets right next to each of those tables so they don't require to have the integrated power in them. This is just for those that are out kind of in the middle for us to be able to add that capability.
So we already have floor boxes needed?
Yes, that's one of the things that Ian was helping me with. We went around and Ian had the meter and I had a whole little box of...
So we just plug them in?
Yep, exactly.
So that's the reasons.
And making...
That would be a question.
Yes, and making sure that they were in the right places so that we could have the right number of tables.
So is it wireless or needs a cord still?
There's a, there's a wire, there's a channel for the cord to go through in one of the legs and then it terminates out the bottom and then you plug it into the floor outlet.
Yes, so it's all inside the leg of the table?
No trip hazard or anything like that.
And then it just goes that little bit from the bottom of the leg into the floor box. So you set it basically right on top of the floor box. And then in the top of the table, you can probably see there's the plugs and USB plugs.
Okay.
And what about our old furniture then? Would we try to resell it?
Yeah, that's still a part. We did have a lot of luck when we sold the chairs. Our, our community was like, hey, what about chairs? Hopefully we will have the same kind of good luck in this way. Once we know when those, when those will be available, then we can start advertising that. And we also have the, reaching across Illinois library system does a for sale, has a for-sale page where you can offer it to other libraries for a price or even, you know, free for the hall and other libraries, especially small libraries will take advantage of those. I will tell you that a lot of these tables, they're a little wobbly. They've been dragged around a few times too. So they're, they're not in the greatest shape, but if you really need a table, then we can probably get... What was the table? They want to do.
But we're looking at the type of table. Do we know how much it would cost to replace the remainders? Does that table...
It's about $36,000 for the, for the remainder of the tables. That's in today's price. Now, the prices have gone up recently and they anticipate they're going to go up again soon. But by 2023, so...
Wouldn't it be like splitting it a lot?
Yeah, it's, it's much less. This, this is as much as the budget can support spread over two fiscal years. Unless we want to go significantly over budget.
Okay, well, we, we would be going over budget on that line.
Right.
And so there may be other offsetting. Not to say I'm not saying I want, I just, I, I...
Exactly. And particularly, my thought is that if we get toward the end of next fiscal year and we're still looking really good, we may see that second set of tables come pretty soon.
Do we have any conditional questions or comments regarding table purchase proposal? I know we support that back organization on tables. Okay, we have the motion to approve the table purchase proposal. It has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed to roll out these?
Trusty Humphrey?
Yes.
Trusty Dunham?
Yes.
Trusty Humphrey?
Yes.
Trusty Stiglitz?
Yes.
Trusty Stiglitz?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the table purchase proposal. We're now on to agenda item 8F, which is the canceling of the December 15 regular board meeting.
So...
Does anyone have any questions? Do you have any thoughts on that? We have a motion to approve canceling the December 15 regular board meeting that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed to roll out these?
Trusty Dunham?
Yes.
Trusty Dunham?
Yes.
Trusty Humphrey?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. We have canceled the December 15 regular board meeting. We're now on to agenda item 9A.
Over.
COVID-19 responsive phase reopening plan. Julie, do you want to let us know how we're doing on the COVID trial?
We're still wearing masks. I know. That's, that's the number one. We're still wearing masks. On November 8, we went back to the rolling six-month calendar for meeting reservations. We are, now that kids can be vaccinated, we're bringing back elementary in-person programming in January. So we are much closer to normal now. Outreach has started up again. Aaron is, Aaron Lindstram Meyer, our children's outreach coordinator, is going out to schools again. You know, it feels, it feels much more normal.
Do we know, I mean, I know like even my folks, I know we have 98% of everyone vaccinated. Is that data that we know with the library?
We are currently encouraging staff to submit their vaccination cards or if they have, or to just let us know their status. We do have a couple of folks who cannot be vaccinated who have also, who have given us that information. So far, Caitlin, do you have the latest numbers? And I want to make sure I get it right.
Yeah, we're at eight unvaccinated. With, I mean, the five staff that haven't been vaccinated.
Well, in one thing, and you may have, this may just be because this was prepared, fully developed or whatever, but there's been some movement on the, within the courts and whether or not the vaccine mandate. So it just made you keep in touch with the employer or how, whatever we need to do to make sure that we're in compliance.
So when this was written, we were still, even though the lawsuits had started at that point, we were still being advised by SHRM and HR source to continue moving forward with crafting a policy to meet that December 4 deadline for having a policy. Since that time, the, that advice is no longer being given. The, it is a wait-and-see approach because of the lawsuits and the injunctions that have been coming out. So we have sample policies. Caitlin and I have discussed at length. The most difficult part of the entire vaccine mandate will be the actual administration of that program from an HR standpoint. So there are a lot of unknowns. So we will continue to monitor and make the appropriate, take the appropriate steps for the library. As I said, we've got some good sample policies to work with. We feel confident that when the, when the new deadline, whatever it is coming, we will meet with the policies that we're considering. Even that. In the meantime, we are, we continue to encourage staff to get vaccinated. We do know that there are several of our unvaccinated staff who have said that they intend to be vaccinated by the deadline. So we continue to encourage those, those programs to move forward. Because at any time, the courts can give a ruling and we could be back on the original timeline if it's scrambled. So...
It does, yeah, it's so hard because even like by the time that, it's like, well, the mandate includes like now you need a booster. It's like, it's for the employers, it's just, it's going to be very difficult to administer it. It's going to be an important... Okay, any other questions or comments for Julie on the COVID-19 responsive phase reopening plan?
And to reauthorize the library director to continue with the COVID-19 responsive phase reopening plan?
Okay, we have the motion to approve agenda item 9A, COVID-19 responsive phase reopening plan, as presented, has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed to roll out these?
Trusty Dunham?
Yes.
Trusty Dunham?
Yes.
Trusty Humphrey?
Yes.
Trusty Stiglitz?
Yes.
Trusty Stiglitz?
Yes.
Trusty Humphrey?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item 9A, the COVID-19 responsive phase reopening plan, as presented. We're now on to agenda item number 10, the library director's report.
Right. Well, since this meeting was so close to our last meeting, there wasn't a huge amount to report. Our MERA renewal for the library's property liability and workers' common insurance came back at a wonderful level, 7.19% increase after the, the suggested budget increase of 20 to 30% because they were very afraid we were going to have a very high renewal. The, to have it be under 10% was amazing. So very, very pleased with the MERA program and service we've been getting. We do continue to be able to have cyber liability in our package. That is something that is, that companies are increasingly declining to add new customers to cyber liability off of the sheer number of cyber breaches that are occurring at this time. So we're very pleased that the program can continue at a 7% renewal and continue that cyber liability coverage at the same time. I do want to bring your attention to the lockers. Our pickup lockers are doing great. We had 286 locker holds. They picked up over almost 400 items out of the locker between all of those holds. So really great numbers and more and more people are finding them all the time. And then the final bit is the elevator. I'm going to hand this to Ian for a moment to talk about our elevator.
This is where the savings are going to go.
I, well, you know, they, when we first started talking about the elevator, believe it or not, I, 2018, 2019. You know, times have changed. Obviously, things are more expensive. So that number did elevate. But I can't, I've already gotten quotes using the, on the partnership program and I can tell you that it will be under $150,000. Not much, but it will. I actually just went over this with Julie in depth. It's, it's old. You know, usually you do an elevator modernization every 20 to 25 years. I actually can't find any data on how old this elevator is. It's not that old because it still has digital controls in it, but I can't find an exact date on any of the standing or the ID tags or anything. So with that being said, it is a good idea to go ahead and budget for 2022, which we have already done. For a whole elevator modernization, that's going to, it's pretty much a brand-new elevator without replacing the car and the hoistway and the piston. Everything else is new. The machines, the controller, all the technology is, you know, state-of-the-art. It's stuff that's going to last for another 20, 25 years. And this also includes an interior cab renovation of the elevator. But we also have to make sure that we bring it up to 2019 code, which now states that you have to have a camera in the elevator with two-way communication. And there has to be talk-to-text functionality for the emergency call box that goes to DuCom, who is our, who is our emergency services dispatcher. So yeah, there's, there's a lot more to it than, than, you know, in the past. But we, we have all the numbers and I can actually share it with you if you'd like. But we, we're going to be going through again to the Omni Partnership. So it is, it is flat rate. This is going to be a turnkey project, which means that the elevator contractor is going to take care of all of the permits, any drawings that are required, any, the state inspections, the fire marshal's inspection, building inspection. All we really have to do is I have to be point of contact and their, their, their source for onsite, you know, management. They're going to have a project manager and a crew. We are, the only unfortunate thing is we are looking at a downtime of anywhere from three to five weeks. There's no way around it. We only have the one car, which is unfortunate. You know, if there was another way to do it, we would. Three to five weeks is actually the best number that I've gotten out of all three of the big elevator companies that I have sat down with and gotten numbers from. Couple of the other ones were five to six weeks and one was even six to seven.
This is why new libraries, new public buildings are always built with at least two elevators. So that when the time comes, you, you build one at a time. That was not the case when this building was built. So we are going to have to make do. We have already started touching on this with the staff, with the management team about how we're going to deal with that. Among the ideas is to have someone, a access desk staff member down at our information desk here in the lobby and also to put several public use computers in the lobby and to have staff available to be able to retrieve items for books. The one good thing that we do have, we do not have a second elevator, we have a dump waiter. So we can actually send carts of books up and down on the dump waiter. So that thing will get a lot of use during this three months. Do you know that faster?
It gets inspected every month along with the passenger car.
Perfect. I just wanted to bring this to your attention to make sure that everybody knows what's happening because this, the elevator renovations proposal will be on the January agenda.
And one of the targets to get it potentially.
So that is the one that has the 15-week lead time. And that's for fabrication of the, the new door panels. That's, so pretty much as soon as we're done with the relay cabinet, we have about a month of rest and then we're going to be kicking up into that. It's going to be a busy 2022.
Essentially a new elevator, right?
It really is, yeah. The cab's going to look completely different. They're, they're going to keep the piston. They're going to keep the T rails that are on there. Everything else, even, even the elevator doors get replaced. That's, it's virtually.
Change the oil.
Yeah, exactly. They're going to reclaim the hydraulic oil, put all new stuff in there. Yeah, nothing. This is the one company that was not going to reuse a bunch of old parts. But everything is brand new, so.
And then just my final bit on my library's report is to remind you that I will not be here for the January board meeting. I will be in Florida for my wedding.
That later.
So Jen will be handling the board meeting. Thanks for the support. And you'll see Ian again in January. Jen, are you having any questions you may have about the elevator?
Okay, we're now on to agenda item 11, which I believe we will, I mean, you just explained this to me last month, but we need a motion to go through executive session. And then once we're in executive session, will who can help the executive session? Is that all?
Yeah, and then you have, when we're back here, you need to vote to come to the board meeting. You don't actually take any votes in executive session. You have to call everybody back and then vote.
Well, if they vote close to executive session now, any back? That's what we do back.
Yes, technically it's not a vote. Technically, it's by act of engagement.
Okay, you look like.
Just like one other thing, we had a secretary.
And who's doing the minutes this time?
Did you just call her?
The, the computer is ready to go. If you need it, do you need a, a USB to go back and forth?
Okay, do we have a motion to move into executive session?
Seven.
I was looking for the motion there. What do we have to say? You seconded?
We're all.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to move into executive session that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with roll call please?
Trusty Jordan? Yes. Trusty Dan? Yes.
Yes.
Trusty Duncan? Yes. Trusty David? Hasn't approved.
Yes, we are now motioning to that session.
Yes, we will copy it off the agenda.
Yeah, it'll be.
Okay, we have a motion to reconvene our meeting. Sorry. Okay, Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Trusty Jordan? Yes. Trusty Dan? Yes. Trusty Hunter? Yes. Trusty Duncan? Yes. Trusty David? Yes.
Yes, thank you. We have reconvened our regular monthly meeting in our central library. And there's three items to discuss. We can, we can determine how best to do this. But basically, we collectively as the board have developed a review and Chris did a wonderful job of kind of weaving it all together. And we'll be, we have agreed collectively that she will deliver that to you as determined between the two of you. And we also developed a list of goals. But it's very important to the board that, you know, our goals are not like just coming to you and saying, these are your goals. We want this to be a collaborative process. We've seen your goals. We've developed goals, some of them based off of the goals you provided, some additional goals. It's a moving target and we want to obviously work together with you on, and what are the, you know, what are the goals like in early 2022? And then, you know, we can discuss them later 2022. You know, as determined, you know, just as we, along our share. And then we also discussed that that your raise will be aligned with a staff increase of 3% for 2022. So. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments?
Thank you all for going through this process. And I really appreciate having goals to work toward. And I appreciate being with the grace and all that you have done to make this a great workplace for me and for us.
And I just think for the, for the community record here, the board is pleased with the performance of our director. She's done an outstanding job during difficult, unprecedented times. Not a perfect job, but an outstanding job.
But he's perfect.
I saw that I would tell you.
Well, thank you. I don't think we are required to make a motion at this point on these issues.
But 3% across the board was already passed, so that's.
Okay. So unless we have any additional questions or comments, we are on to agenda item 13, trustee comments and requests for information. I have a couple of just quick comments. I just, I know this was brought up, I think, in the last meeting, but Jen, I just want to highlight the work that you've been doing and really pursuing these grants. It's great. Makes all of our jobs a little bit easier. So thank you very much. The, I also, I know Allison is not here, but I saw that, I thought it was interesting and I, I appreciated the fact that they have the SOB program started again in October, which was something that I think is great program for the kids. I also had highlighted the locker hold, which Julie, you had mentioned, which is fantastic. I assume that's just going to continue increasing from there. So those are the only issues I wanted to highlight. If anyone else has any comments or requests for information, feel free to.
I just wanted to add another comment tagging on the one that I just made about the director. And that is our library staff, I mean, the leadership department, is our library staff independently and just collaboratively done an outstanding job during the pandemic, before and after. I just think you've done an outstanding staff. And again, maybe not quite perfect, but I think more of the board is quite perfect. I just wanted to say thank you to the staff.
For two hundred of lockers, and I saw the number was almost 400. I don't know what our expectation was going in. Or is there going to be a cap where like you can only give so many?
We're going to find that out as, as we go along. A lot of it is, it's very fluid because it depends on, people have several days to pick their things up. So if they come in right away, then that locker is available to put the next person's hold in.
Are they, that it's been empty?
Yes, they can, they can see on the software that controls it. What's.
How many?
How many are?
And so they're pretty instantly maybe rebuild that. I don't want to try that myself.
I know.
We're getting in November 10.
Any additional comments or requests for information? All right, then we are on to agenda item 14, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.